Okay. I'd like to stand for the pledge, please. Thank you. Have a report out of closed session from our meeting of January 11th, 2024. We delayed that because that was our recognition meeting in closed session by a vote of three dash zero dash two. Members Malcheski, Perry, and Bickers voting yes, and members Kelly and Osborne absent. The board voted to accept the stipulated expulsion agreement for student number two, zero, two, three, dash, two, four, dash, zero, zero, two. For tonight's closed session, there is no report out of closed session for January 23rd, 2024. We need a motion to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No changes.
Motion, please. Student vote?
In favor.
All board members on favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Public comment on non-agenda items?
None received.
Thank you. We begin with reports with our student board representative.
Good evening. I'll be giving the report tonight. First, I'd like to just thank Dr. Hatchell. I had the opportunity today from El Moro to speak with Easy, one of the students. And it was just amazing because often I don't have the chance to connect with the elementary schools. But it was an awesome opportunity to be able to hear about, you know, what's been happening at the elementary schools and what developments are happening there. So I'll start with El Moro Elementary. So Easy shared with me today that instead of the, instead of a kind of a student council, which is traditional at an elementary school, they have something called a Sea Lion Senate. And the goal of the Sea Lion Senate is to include not just, you know, a select 10 students for an entire year, but to really, it rotates every trimester from a different group of students. So it ranges between 15 and 20 students per trimester. And kind of the, and what the, you know, they work on similar items to a student council. They, you know, fundraise, they run food drives. But one of the really significant things that I heard from Easy today was that they had the opportunity to meet with district officials. I heard they met with Mr. Dixon about the lunch menu and some changes they wanted to see there. And more significantly, what I heard too is they met with Dr. Keller about, you know, things at school that would make them feel more emotionally supported, which I think is really significant right now. And so that was some of the cool developments I heard there, as well as some of the environmental efforts that the student senate, the Sea Lion Senate is leading in regards to recycling and just creating a school culture centered around the environment, considering, you know, they're, they're right next to a state park. They can see the ocean from their classroom. So that's for El Moro. Again, I want to just reiterate my gratitude towards Dr. Hatchell for connecting me with the students. Really appreciative. And then from Top of the World Elementary School, I heard from Doctor, Ms. Schooler about some of the different things that are going on up there. It sounds like they have some kindness initiatives, which seem to be kind of spreading, you know, some sort of unity throughout campus, which is important as well, as well as the student councils organizing a food drive for our troops, which is really important, considering the great service they do to us. And then moving on to Thurston Middle School, Mr. Vidal shared with me that they're doing CTE presentations throughout this week to show students kind of the different offerings they have. When I was at Thurston, I remember they used to, we would use to go on field trips to different, you know, like we went to the Orange County Courthouse and stuff like that. So I'm really glad that post-COVID, we're still able to kind of incorporate this into the curriculum, as well as, again, they're also, they have their sports going right now. So there's a boys' basketball and girls' volleyball, which seems to really bring some unity to the school where students can come to an event, you know, after school and, you know, cheer on their friends, which I think is really important, considering they're sitting in school all day. They need something to unify them. And then they've also just worked on comprising a green team, which is made up of teachers, administrators, and students throughout the campus who work on kind of identifying how they can best combat climate change on their campus, specifically regarding recycling and, you know, sustainable, you know, disposing of their trash, which I think was interesting. And then throughout Laguna, at Laguna Beach High School, I spoke with Dr. Allman, as well as some members from ASB. And kind of some really cool things that happened today was we had the battle, we had our first round of Battle of the Bands. And what that is, is they play, the student-led bands on campus play during lunch. And I never see, never seen unity at school more than today. All the students were sitting on the turf and the quad, and they were listening to, they were listening to some post kind of rock music. And it was just incredible to see the student unities. Kids were singing along. Teachers and, you know, staff were out there listening. It's a really great initiative that ASB has put on. And then we just, the ASB just decided on the formal theme, which is The Last Rose. It's based off a TV show. Formal's coming up in a couple of weeks, which is really exciting. And then all this, all the English classes that began their flow read, which is the district's environmental project. And so, you know, great, you know, different students are reading about different experiences from environmentalists ranging from firefighters to, you know, ocean conservationists. So we're learning about some really interesting things there. In my class specifically, we're, and we're, I'm a junior, so for flow, our thing is the ocean. And so part of our English curriculum now is we do, we're reading some poetry about the ocean in my class, which, and then the other thing is it's a film project as well. So that's something that we're kind of working on as well. And then the last thing that's coming up in a couple of weeks is we have Unity Week coming up, which is focusing on DEI initiatives, as well as just kind of overall wellbeing and health, which I think is really important, especially as, you know, high school students get geared up for AP season and stuff like that. And, you know, getting college results back, I think it's really important that we just keep that all in mind. And then on a personal level, I've just recently been appointed to the City of Laguna Beach's Recreation Committee as a student representative. So I'm just, you know, I'm, my first meeting there, I learned so much about what the city's doing in regards to facilities and what the needs are, not only of the students, but also of, you know, the general population of Laguna Beach. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
And then to quickly add on to Carter's report, we also had a gala to support the arts on Saturday, and I'd like to thank Member Perry for attending. I'm very glad that we have such a big support for the arts here in this community. And once again, I'd like to thank Member Perry for attending.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. And I was hoping that Chase could teach my husband to dance. I had never knew he was such a fantastic dancer.
We have reports from our bargaining units, and I see we have Thesa, representing CSCA.
Good evening. I have a small report. I think everyone's back at it and enjoyed the break and just things seem to be running smoothly. We did do our CSCA survey for our sunshine letter, and it was really nice to get positive feedback. For once, like, you guys are doing a good job. Here's a few ideas, but we got a lot of feedback. So we are six-tening our sunshine letter. Right now it's going through the process, so you will see that in your February. And we start negotiations in March. So we're looking forward to a nice, positive spring. Thank you.
Thank you. And LaBuca's not here tonight, so we go to our school resource officer report.
Happy Tuesday, everybody. It's unusual to have a board meeting tonight. We love it. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. We have a fantastic new addition to the SRO team, Officer Danny Lopez. So he will give the update, but he's been an amazing partner for me so far. We have a great history with one another, so I'm really looking forward to the continued partnership.
Feel like it's my first day at school. Good evening. My name's Daniel Lopez. As Ashley said, I'm a police officer and now the new addition to the SRO team. We're replacing Fred. Another mustache, another smile. So I'm happy to be here and excited to be with you guys tonight. I'll dive right into it. So recently, we just had a shop with a cop this past December. We had approximately 15 kids join, and it was a resounding success. Several support officers and staff in the PD joined in and had a great time. We also, today, the First Generation Club from Laguna Beach High School had their very first field trip. And as a field trip to remember, they were at the John Wayne Airport escorted by Orange County Sheriff's Department, who partnered up with us today, alongside with the Orange County Fire Authority, and did a tarmac tour alongside with a canine bomb-stiffing demonstration and as well as a helicopter landing from the Sheriff's Department in conjunction with Orange County Fire Authority's crash rescue team. Something that has never been seen by our agency or any other agency. That trip has never happened before. So we've literally made history today. It's amazing to be a part of it. Kids are thrilled to be a part of it and looking forward to future field trips. Continuing on, since I joined the position this past month in early January, we've been doing non-stop ride-alongs for the kids from the elementary schools, doing ice cream ride-alongs every morning and following up with like afternoon ice cream lunches, excuse me, donut ride-alongs in the morning, ice cream for lunch. Ice cream for breakfast sounds amazing. Sorry. Continuing, we've been doing that nonstop. We have several ride-along scheduled on the books for the near future. In the meantime, we've been visiting every classroom at every campus we can, time permitting, and not interrupting any lectures, of course. But just getting to know my face of the kids, that way they feel comfortable to me whenever they have anything they want to talk to us about. Continuing forward from that, we're also involved with the forensic club here at TOW, excuse me, Thurston. It's been a long day. I apologize. We've been joining them for different online crimes against children lectures, as well as different crime processing techniques that we do on the law enforcement side that might spark their interest in the future in forensic sciences and investigations as well for law enforcement. We're also very excited to be attending the Order Formal event coming up for the high school. Can't wait to see it. And again, just to get better associated with the kids and with the staff. We've also recently visited the Strength in Numbers Club for bingo night over at Laguna Beach High School. And as we continue looking forward, we're going to be assisting Rancher's San Margarita with their first e-bike course, which I know there's several hundred children signed up for, and that'll be their very, very first course. So we're kind of partnering up with them to kind of guide their SRO through that process, as well as bring some knowledge back, some experiences back, so we can benefit our schools and our children as well. We have two upcoming e-bike courses on the 25th and the 28th of this month here over at Thurston. And that's all I have for you now.
Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you so much.
So can I say, yeah, so thank you and welcome. I sound a little bit like a broken record because I bring this up every meeting, and I don't even know that this is really a responsibility of the SROs, but I now have a parent group who's come to me because there was a crossing guard who was hit coming out of Thurston. And it has been an ongoing concern about the speed. It's not the e-bike so much, although when I pick up my kid, there is a lot of e-bikes zooming out of there. But a general concern about the speed of cars coming down Park Avenue and the kind of unwillingness of the city to, at the very least during school opening and closing hours, perhaps slow the speed to 20 miles per hour on Park Avenue or in other school places. So I'm just bringing that up because there is a parent group that they would ask me to bring it to, to the SROs, but also to just ask people to start thinking about how to make these, the opening and closing of school more safe for crossing guards, bikers, walkers, and drivers. Thanks.
We take the safety of the crossing guards and our students very seriously. I don't know if you noticed this recently, but during drop-offs and pickups, we've obviously been present as much as we can, calls permitting, of course. As far as the lowering the speed of it, unfortunately, it's a little outside of my reach, but I will definitely pass that along to my higher-ups and see if they can do anything about that. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments?
I can make a related comment, and this might be of interest to Ashley, and I didn't catch your first name, sorry.
Danny.
Danny and Danny. And there, it's worth following up with the city on the bike lane on Park Avenue that they've agreed to put in. It was in the, the capital improvement plan from the prior fiscal year and was supposed to be going to planning. There's already been traffic engineering on it. And the city planner and the engineering office said that that was going to happen in November, and I haven't heard anything since. And then we had that accident. But what I'm noticing in cities more and more are very vivid, green bike lanes. And here at Thurston, there's a big interaction between parked cars, driving cars, car doors, and bicyclists. So if any street needed a green striped, bright bike lane to help parents slow down and kids get in and out of cars and bikes, there's between 90 and 100, I think, a day, Principal Vidal could confirm that, it would be here. So if we could work with the city to push that along faster, I think everybody would benefit. And supposedly, it's in the works.
We don't have this on as a discussion item. It was just to ask a question of our SRO.
And that the, that the parents wanted to bring was the, whether or not it's possible to eliminate U-turns in the area from about eight houses up to just below Thurston during the time of drop-off, because some parents pull up and then they do a quick U-turn. So I'm just letting you know what parents are asking.
I would just ask, is there, where should parents take their concern to this, involved with the city? You know?
In regards to the city and encourage the traffic?
Right. Because that would be seen to me what they would need to do, rather than bring it to our body, which goes through a bureaucratic process. But if they have, if they could go to someone in the city with their concerns directly. It does, but that's our concern too, but.
Of course. I can understand that. I can appreciate that. That being said, we are talking about multiple layers of city government, not only the law enforcement side of it, but also city planning and so on and so forth. And those are two different parts of the body, so I speak of the city body. Nevertheless, I would recommend if you have that parent group, put those recommendations together and pass it off to the city as a whole. And I'm sure whatever recommendations they have, maybe answered, maybe not. Again, that's a little above my pay grade, unfortunately, but at least that's the direction we can go ahead and travel in.
There is a city committee on traffic, parking, and circulation.
I think that would be probably the best place to bring those concerns up.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the welcome.
All right. And if you share with me, I'll, I actually, we're working on scheduling our regular meeting with the LPPD and the command staff, and I can obviously share across as well. So again, welcome to Officer Lopez. I had a chance to meet him as well as his sergeant and captain, kind of the oversee that side of the house. And so we're really excited to have, have you here. And I know I super appreciate Fred and all that he did on behalf of the program. I want to once again thank the board for moving the meeting to Tuesday. I know this is a challenge, and this allows me to go to the superintendent symposium. It's the one time of year that all the superintendents from the state of California get together and have a conference. I'm actually looking forward to quite a few of the sessions. I was looking through just yesterday, trying to plan everything out. As in typical superintendent fashion, I think our first session started like 7:00 AM in the morning and go till 6:00, some, I think, full days, which is fantastic because we're trying to get it in in two and a half days. So, but again, thank you for, for allowing us to shift this meeting date and time. Not a ton. I mean, we, we did have break and we had our recognition meeting more recently, and that was, I think, a great opportunity for us to celebrate our students. I attended a PTA meeting, council meeting, and I appreciate, I know Dr. Kelly sent his regrets that he couldn't be there. But President Vickers did share some updates that I was able to share on her behalf and the board's behalf. They are very, very busy. There's so many things going on. And I know Dr. Kelly mentions that every time as well, that you're just, I'm just stunned at what they're able to put on. So in honor of Dr. Kelly not being able to be present there, I'll give that report that just so grateful to our PTAs. The governor did release his budget, and I will say it was a long press conference. There is still a lot of question marks in the budget. This is step one, as we all know, where the governor releases his budget, and then in May, we'll have a May revision, and we'll have a better understanding of what the implications may be. There are some cuts coming in current year, not to us necessarily, though that could change because he's, there's an $8 billion plus hole right now, if not more, in the current budget. And then obviously, it's, it's pretty significant in the, in the out year. So the governor made it clear his intention is to hold schools as harmless as possible in this and pull from the extra funds that we have set aside from the time when the budgets were good, so we can try to offset for the next year. So we'll see. But again, more to come on that. And again, thanks to Carter and Chase. We have, I think, two amazing student board reps that do a lot of things and make an effort to be here. So I just want to express my appreciation to you. We're halfway through the year. So only a few more meetings to go. You're getting to the, getting to the end here in June. We'll be here before you know it. But I do really appreciate the efforts that you, both of you, put in to be here as much as possible, and when you can't be here, letting us know. So, so I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our cabinet members. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. And I was wondering what that music was coming from, so thank you for explaining that because it made it into my office, and I'm across the street quite a way. So it had to be fun. It had to be very loud. As, as Dr. Vlory mentioned, we did get the January's Governor Budget Proposal. Went to the School Services of California workshop last year, talking through some of it. I've identified a few slides of interest, but as Dr. Vlory mentioned, at this time, we don't see much impact at all to community-funded districts, which is positive. But we're going to dig in, pay close attention as we get to the May revision, and then we'll make sure that we keep the board updated with any possible changes or impacts to us specifically. Other than that, I was also able to attend the El Moro PTA meeting today, and I remember Perry was there, and it was, it's always good to get to those meetings. It's really enjoyable to see just how much volunteer work they do. In addition to the funding that they provide to support our, our students and schools, the volunteer hours are so important for the work they do in relation to their 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(3) status. But really appreciative of everything that they've done for us and hope to get to a lot more of them this year. So thank you.
Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Vickers. Since our last board report was in December, I wanted to highlight that we did begin the second semester with our professional development day for all classified staff, elementary certificate staff, and some secondary certificate support staff. Special thanks to the IS and HR team who worked diligently to provide another seamless PD day for our staff. And as we've shared in the past, we really focus our attention on providing offerings towards the employees' job classifications, so it's really aligned to their work. And, and this year, we have a couple that, to share with you. So the, the few sessions that we had, or some, a few examples of the sessions we had, was a classroom behavior support training focused solely for our TK and kindergarten instructional assistants, working with those age students, to providing our high school staff, who support students in their career, I'm sorry. So support the career exploration opportunities that, for our high school students. The session delved into innovative approaches that seamlessly integrate essential career skills into the academic journey. So we had, I mean, you had your college and career, you had, you had your scholarship, all those, those key workability, everyone from the high school that, that does that work. It was a great, and they, they loved that session. To integrating dance standards and elementary PE lessons for our PE teachers and PEIA, IAs, and also a session on environmental literacy for our, our elementary science specialists. So again, very targeted to their work. So we're appreciative of the hard work that goes into that. And also, our district insurance committee did meet this past week. We, it's a combination of CSCA, LaBuca, and management members, and it was meeting two of four, where we navigate the world of health and welfare and spend time evaluating the plans that we offer and look to see what, what tweaks and improvements we can do to enhance the health and welfare benefits of our staff. And that's all.
Thank you. Dr. Mabry?
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, as Mr. Conlon said, we had a great professional development day for all of our classified staff, as well as our elementary certificated. We had 35 different sessions going on during that day. 31 of those were facilitated by our own staff. So that was really cool to see our staff, the, the time and resources we put into developing their expertise. They're sharing that back and coaching and, and developing our own, our other staff. We also took a trip in structural services. Our coordinator of environmental literacy took a team of 17 people down to Encinitas to visit their green school, their district, look at their approaches around environmental literacy, our sustainability. That happened about a week ago, last week, myself, along with our two Vapitosas, as well as two people from Orange County Department of Ed, Scott Fitzpatrick, as well as Dennis Cole, people worked within their arts department, our, our district partnerships, went up to Sacramento, went to Art Summit, and just a lot of really good connections around the increased attention to visual and performing arts. And also a lot of the challenges districts are trying, trying to find part-time experts. It's not easy right now. And so, so looking, a lot of districts are going through similar things around looking for part-time experts, sharing between districts and schools. What are the best ways to, to maximize the resources everybody has? It's an exciting time in this, this area. And actually, we were there. They highlighted our elementary program, which was exciting, just starting their way of the, providing a more flexible, personalized program by integrating it into the curriculum. So most of, as you know, most of our program is integrated in there. And they were especially impressed with the board's support, continued support around the different staffing that we have at the elementary level for all the variety of different visual performing arts. So thank you for that support for many, many years. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out to Dr. Hatchell, who and I are presenting this Saturday at the AXA Conference, Region 17 Conference, which is for school administrators, this area, around enhancing school culture through student engagement. So we're facilitating a session there that kind of highlights some of our work around learner profile, but really digs into some of those more learned-centered approaches, what around MTSS, some stuff around, some of the stuff the secondary middles, or the high school, middle school are doing, whether that's flow program or just tutorial periods that are providing more choice. So kind of exciting to share some of that with other administrators in California. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a principal report from Dr. Allman at the high school.
Good evening, board and students. Really excited to talk to you this evening about our report of the state of the Laguna Beach High School. So here we go. I'd like to obviously highlight the learner profile and let you all know that we've obviously rolled out the major components of the learner profile to our staff and are excited to really encapsulate the outcomes that we have envisioned for our students around this. Our team continues to find connections and links to the learner profile and our experiences that we offer students during their time at the high school. And we really focus a lot on the importance of the wave component of the learner profile because it is essentially the important soft skills that students take away from their learning and their experience. As you also know, and you've seen us highlight before, as we present for our schools, is we really focus on the three goals that we've established through the LCAP feedback process. That includes college career readiness, socio-emotional competencies, and positive self-identity, safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. And I've tried to kind of keep it simple in the work and the approach that I've done by really defining those at the high school level as goal one really means for us, support and growth for students, and goal two, staff and student connections. And for goal three, it's engaged, empowered students and them practicing things that impact culture on our campus, but also in the greater school community. So really excited to talk to you about those things this evening. And we'll get going with goal number one, where we really are looking at three of the four subcategories in goal number one around multi-tiered systems of support, extended learning opportunities, and career education. When we talk about multi-tiered systems of support, we're really focusing on all students to start with and providing them with great opportunities for learning. And we do that by really focusing on classroom practices that are engaging to students and really foster their voice and choice in their learning. But also, we tier interventions based on student needs. And here you see a representation of our fall eye-ready process for ninth, 10th, and 11th graders as it relates to math. Obviously, the goal is to get the green zone larger and decrease the zone on the right. As students need more and more supports and services based on where they're at with their math progress, we get into deeper connections and personalized goal setting with students. And we actually have specific chats around what they need to learn based on their eye-ready performance and build targeted lessons to support them in that learning process. This is obviously driven not only by the eye-ready comprehensive exam, but also classroom practices. And we, we want to make sure that we really support the students with the highest need, but also support all students in their learning. We're currently going through our second round of eye-ready assessment right now. We got a lot of, we go through a reflective and refining process where we got a lot of feedback on how and when we implement the test. And we're utilizing our tutorial period to really focus on students taking that test in small little bites around 35 minutes long, so that they can really optimize their results and make progress through the, the curriculum. When we also talk about another focus for us as we support students, we're looking at attendance. So we've covered academics, and I've shared a general synopsis of how we approach mathematics, similar in English. And then, of course, attendance is a school, even more so district-wide goal for us. And our chronic attendance rate last year at the culmination of the school year was at 18.6%. And we've been monitoring that, and we found in our first semester, we found a decrease of 7.7% because we're sitting at school-wide chronic attendance. Now, remember, this is averaged over the time that school's been in session, is currently sitting at 10.9%. And really with the luxury, and I do use the word luxury here, of our staffing and the ability to really have our schedule allows teachers and students more flexibility in the work they do. We've increased really good relationships with families and students in need around the issue of attendance. We have teachers on special assignment that are able to focus on their work and support students. with outreach and personalized interactions with those families to really drive home the importance of attendance, obviously, and get students on campus. Another really positive aspect for us in our, in goal one is really allowing students to have a focus on extended learning opportunities. And as you know, we have a section of our day that is called tutorial. And it helps teachers and students have dedicated time to use for supports in tiers one, two, and three, right? But it also provides unique opportunities for students. Teachers can refer students to a specific tutorial assignment. Students can actually choose tutorial assignments. And here you can see a weekly example at all grade levels of how students might choose a tutorial assignment. The nice thing about this is if a student has no need for specific support academically, either just classroom-wide or strategic intensive support, students are able to choose an area of interest or a passion that they can spend time researching, talking to industry experts, and even if they're leaders in different capacities outside of student leadership, they're able to utilize tutorial time to meet with other club presidents and do talk about school. Best to really build our dual enrollment numbers for all students on our campus, financial aid, and of course, test prep for college readiness. In addition, I wanted to really highlight the other unique learning opportunities that we have for students in our eight different pathways that we offer on campus. I know you're all familiar with those, but that's the pathways that we solely offer on campus. Students, of course, can also access different pathways in the greater CCA area in, with the offerings on the, on the Capistrano Unified School District High School sites. And then I really wanted to share our dual enrollment growth over the last five years, utilizing the last two years as a real focus where you can see the, the bar graphs on the right show, the blue section shows our counseling one implementation that we, we did last, last year in the second semester only. And then this year in both semesters of our GSS class, where we really get, essentially in a very basic sense, we give a student, a freshman student, an opportunity to dip their toe in the college kind of curriculum experience with counseling one-on-one. It's a small one-unit class that the freshmen will take in their GSS class that really gives them one unit of college credit, but more importantly, gives them the exposure and confidence to really continue their dual enrollment and college-going experience while they're in high school. So you can see that our numbers have been really impactful by putting those systems in place, but more so building awareness long-term around the dual enrollment process for students. So we're really excited about that work, too. When we talk about goal two, we're obviously talking about the student experience, but more personally for our staff at the high school, we're really wanting it to be balanced and formative so that students leave with a variety of options that they get to choose from when they leave high school, but also more importantly, a set of soft skills that really will help them navigate life after high school into college and beyond. That obviously is a big, a big impact around student wellness and health, right? So we have, I'm really proud of the work we've done at the secondary level around the comprehensive school counseling program. We do a needs assessment with students. This year, we implemented a needs assessment in the fall. We'll do so in the spring. Our fall respondents rate was over eighty-five percent. So we have a really good data set from our students around what their needs are specifically when it comes to support in high school. We do, we do specific grade level work with all students around their academic goals, socio-emotional wellness, and career interests. And we really focused on building out the scope and sequence of the counseling support and work in grades six through twelve. And I'm really thankful that Joe and the, and the Thurston team of counselors has spent a lot of time with our counselors to really make sure that the service that students get six through twelve is going to be more seamless when we hit that platinum standard. So I'm excited about the work ahead there. And of course, the student support specialist that we have in our WellSpace now, which we refer to as the Wave, is a really great hub for students to either kind of decompress, regain focus, or just connect with our student support specialist. And I'm really proud of the peer mentor work that our students have done on our campus. And I'll highlight a little bit about that and the events that they host later. I wanted to share a little bit about the student needs assessment from twenty-two to twenty-three. So this is, the, the results you see in the light blue are from twenty-two. The results you see in the dark blue are twenty-three. And you look at this, I kind of look at this graph as two sides. The left side really represents, I mean, actually, when you see it, it kind of looks alarming like, oh, my gosh, the needs assessment, actually, the needs of the students increased from one year to the next. But really what we're looking at on the left side of this graph is the academic, college, and career interests that students have and want to learn more about, right? So that left side of the graph represents results from the student needs assessment that are really challenging students or inspiring students to seek more information around the topics of time management, study skills, career research, college research, and financial aid. Those are all good things that students want to be aware of. So after I kind of processed the responses and looked at this, I was like, okay, I feel like we're hitting the right spots for our students and their awareness. Now, on the right side, social emotional issues and challenges that students have, you can see have kind of maintained some stability or even gone down a little bit. But we know that those things are always going to be challenges for students. And I love the fact that they're reporting out on that so that we can tailor our more like tier-two, tier-three work with students to help them along the way. And you can see that that relates to mental health concerns, challenges with friendships, managing stress and anxiety, and then really being aware of maybe different or diverse backgrounds for students. So I think it's very promising information that helps drive our work moving forward. And I'll get a little bit deeper into that right now. When we talk about what touchpoints our counselors have with students, Superintendent Valori and I were talking really about the purpose behind the work that counselors do and really being able to measure the outcomes and impact of that work. And I think our counselors are finding their way doing that. I'm really proud of the work that they do because every time they meet with students, be it individually or in group, they give a little pre or post-test. And you can see on the right here, the counseling grade-level presentations for ninth and tenth grade, they really honed in on pre and post-test data around graduation requirements and college requirements. So makes sense, right? A ninth grader kind of first point of contact in a group with a counselor, they're going to want to make sure they understand their graduation requirements and also have a general idea of what college requirements are, are, are going to be part of their time at high school. So you can see the pre-test of that, students felt that they were aware at about a level of sixty-five percent for grad requirements, ninety-two after their contact. So it's very specific on what they present. We want to make sure we understand the takeaway of those presentations. And we want to make sure that the post-test data has a positive impact around the knowledge that we set out to have the students learn. More importantly, we can see here on this chart to the right, when we ask students if they feel confident about their plan after high school, you can see on this Likert scale response, strongly agrees on the left side of that data set and strongly disagree is on the right side of that data set. Of course, on our post-data, we want most students to be in strongly agree or agree, and we are accomplishing that. And this is while it might be, seems like a simple measure, it's an important measure for us as a counseling team to make sure that we're hitting the mark that we need to hit. Also, I wanted to share with you the specific and dedicated presentations that they, that our counseling team does by grade level. And the quick perusal will just hopefully make sense to you around why we do what we do by grade level, right? So if we're focusing on ninth grades, ninth grade students having, building self-advocacy and relationship skills, that makes sense, right? Because we want to push them out into the high school world, ready to kind of be able to manage relationships and advocate for themselves. It's one of the first things I say on eighth grade parent orientation night is that we really want your students to be self-actualized and advocate for themselves first. You have to make the tough decision as a parent of, as to when you want to insert yourself in that process. Self-awareness and exploration for grade ten, tenacity and strengthening connections as an eleventh grader. We all know what our juniors face during their junior year in high school, and it is a challenging one. So we want to make sure that they're ready, tenacious, and feel confident moving forward in that. And then, of course, as students kind of get in the threshold of life after high school in grade twelve, we really want to make sure that they have a great sense of self-awareness. They're meeting their own needs emotionally and physically and nutritionally. And we want to make sure they're good at taking care of themselves. So that, those are really important topics for us to cover. And it is a result of the information we gather along the student's journey through the needs assessment and individual and group contacts that counselors have with students. So it's a very interactive process. It's very responsive. If I present on this topic next year, we could very well be adjusting the topics that we present on by grade level based on student need. I hope that makes sense. Also, as I mentioned before, the real specific and succinct work of our secondary counselors around scope and sequence for all students, right? So we want to be able to say that students get X, Y, and Z grades six through twelve from our counseling team. And we're really spending a lot of time with the middle school team, building that out so that we have, like I said earlier, a seamless kind of feel for it from the student perspective around the support and service they get around academic and socio-emotional wellness. And then, of course, you're going to get tired of me talking about direct and indirect services because I've done, I've highlighted this as a, as a process for the counseling work, the last three presentations I've done to our school board. But really, what we want to do is, as you can see from the twenty-two and twenty-three school year, we want to keep our direct services at around eighty percent and our indirect services at about twenty percent. That's the healthy kind of suggestion based on the Ask-A Model. And we really have made that an intentional practice for us. And you can see that it's got us results from year one and twenty-one when we started this to really focusing on how we provide support and services to students on those right-to-pie charts. I also wanted to just highlight the DF comparison data that we have there on this slide. And you can see our first semester in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight DNFs. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a total of a hundred-and-forty-two DNFs at the semester grading mark, okay? We don't like DNFs. We're always trying to help support students and earning the best grade possible, but that's a decrease of thirty-one point three percent of DNFs from one semester, first year one to one semester, year two. Now, I want to make sure we know that our enrollment has also declined about nine point six percent. But even with that decline taken into account here, you can see that that thirty-one point three percent is still a significant decrease in DNS. We could attribute that, obviously, we'd love to attribute that solely and directly to our counseling support and services that they provide. But we've also, as you know, made a lot of other changes on campus. We could also attribute it to systems in place around tutorial, which I shared, schedules, where we have a wider variety of opportunities and flexibility for students as they navigate their high school career with the schedule that we are currently implementing. So I've been, I've been really looking and talking to colleagues that I'm lucky enough to work with in this district about data points that really reflect that, but so much of our work does. But I thought I should, it was important for me to highlight that. In addition, as I mentioned before, we have our student support specialist. And now we have a dedicated space for students known as our WellSpace. We call it the Wave. I wanted to share with you some points of contact that we've had so far this year. Fifty-nine students have been visiting for referrals by colleagues that are, maybe have a concern or a specific issue that they want help addressing with a student. We, and we've had two-hundred-and-thirty-eight visits or contacts in the WellSpace since it has, has opened in the beginning of the school year. And of course, our top concerns, we always kind of like want to monitor what we're, what we're dealing with. And you could see it's in alignment with what we found in our student needs assessment around anxiety and relationships, but also managing stress. And that goes along with the top concerns that have been coming into the wellness space. So it's a great space where students can self-select and go in and decompress, but it's also a good spot for them to get help. Also, as I shared a little bit before, we, we don't just wait for students to come to us. When we talk about wellness and, and, and mental health, we do classroom presentations. Our student support specialist, Ms. Humphries, has been very active in getting out into classrooms to talk specifically about stress management, wellness, bullying, and conflict prevention. We have, we host WellSpace tutorials during our tutorial flex time around test anxiety, how to help friends out, gratitude journaling practices, and mindful coloring. We just want to build an arsenal of practices that students can get to get their mind, you know, balanced and right. And then, of course, our amazing student peer mentors host wellness events to really build awareness for students and make them feel safe and comfortable about really talking about challenging and heartfelt things at times. So they have newcomers lunch, Suicide Prevention Day activities that we host at lunch. We have a great, as, as, excuse me, as Carter mentioned, we're, we're going to have a great No Place For Hate event coming up on our Unity Week. And then, of course, another, numerous other presentations and lunchtime activities. And then finally, on goal three, when we refer to goal three, what we're really wanting our students to focus on is opportunity and really getting out and showing and implementing soft skills and showing people what they've learned. We, we want to be providing engagement and empowering opportunities for our students. And what I could safely say around implementing flow on our campus is really the common read, like Carter referenced earlier today, all grades are reading common books by grade around fire, land, ocean, or water, so around environmental issues. We get students out in the community where we've had students attend the Coast Summit. We've had a flow fair on our campus. We have campus-wide student involvement of Flow Club, Walking for Water, MUN Jazz Band. So we're getting other groups involved in this process. And then, of course, our community partners give us an opportunity for students to get out to facilities like The Ranch, work with Coast Film and Music Festival. to facilities like The Ranch, work with Coast Film and Music Festival, Laguna Beach Fire, in the work uh around environmental stewardship on our campus. A more, another uh important highlight during Flow Week that occurred in November this year is students really get to be first witness to industry-leading professionals that are really working and sharing their passion, right? Which is what we ask our students to do. We want them to be interested in something. They we want them to be passionate about it. We want them to have fun. We want them to feel purposeful. And they get to hear from people like Obi Kaufman, Jeremy Jones, Chad Nelson, John Rose. Chad Nelson, CEO of Surf Rider, John Rose, founder of Waves for Water, they both shared testimonials on our campus directly to students about how they failed, about how they overcame their challenges, all built around the goals that they're living, working, and existing on today. So when you hear a guy like John Rose, who's a professional surfer who transitioned out of professional surfing into business and then found a purpose in getting fresh water to people around the country and the world, it's pretty powerful for our students to hear the journey that that person went on because it's so much aligned with what they're dealing with as it relates to challenges and experiences right now. Um, and then, of course, these are just little anecdotal photos of our kids out and about presenting to the greater community at the Coast Film Festival um where they have industry experts from all around the country. Um, and we have people talking about sustainable farming and building compost piles. We have kids creating video. Um, we have kids creating films that are being presented in in these uh film festivals around important topics that we've asked them to really research, explore. And again, to me, these are perfect opportunities for students to build and work and hone their soft skills like communication, collaboration, problem solving. Um, and it's a great way to see it in action. Flow is one of numerous opportunities that our students are provided with where they can really exhibit those skills. But I just, I'm so proud of the work that the team of of educators on our campus have done around this. And then, of course, moving forward for us at at the high school is we're going to continue to be reflective and we're going to continue to refine. Um, and that starts for me always with getting student perspective around what their experience is like in high school. Um, everything from inside the classroom to how they navigate campus to opportunities that are unique and outside of the classroom where they can learn. Um, and we want to perpetuate and really empower students around their own voice and choice and the and their direction they take in their learning. Um, and we're working consistently on offering a variety of opportunities for students to do so. Um, I personally think there's nothing more empowering than students that the young adults that we're lucky enough to work with, getting to see us as the adults in the room really cha-challenge each other, try new things, fail, learn from that failure and move on and be better because of it. I think that's an important message um that students need to see in their as it relates to their learning is taking risks and not being afraid to challenge themselves and 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 you're gonna you're gonna hit some roadblocks sometimes, but you're gonna get through it. And I feel like our staff does that on the daily um for the betterment of the organization. And ultimately, for us too, as we face the accreditation process next year, is um, you know, we're going to embark on a self-study where all the things I kind of highlighted this evening are going to be taken into account. And we're going to continue to really, really look at what we can improve based on our last visitation and accreditation and what we're where we're going moving forward. This is a unique opportunity for me. I was sharing with my colleagues that I haven't been through an accreditation from the end of one to the next cycle in a school site. So I'm really excited for us moving forward to see how we've grown, what challenges we're going to have ahead and um, you know, doing that with a great team at the high school. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm uh want to thank you for an excellent report. It covers so much. It's just impressive. Um, the page that I'm the most interested in is the multi-tiered system of support, the I Ready for grades nine, ten, and eleven. And I would just wonder if you have the statistics broken up by year. My concern is the seventy-nine students who um are um, I don't know what to say, the C students or the and the eighty-six students who are um, seems to uh need a lot of help. And I just would know, are they freshmen, uh which I would have no problem with. If they're juniors, I have some quite concerns.
Most of our, most of our targeted students in the red and yellow zone in a very simple approach is are mostly ninth and tenth graders. Um, but they were we're we're providing Superintendent Valoria with our comprehensive report and process for those students as we work with them and support them through getting to to grade level or or beyond.
And my second question on that same slide is about attendance and um chronic absentee rate. I know that when I came on the board, I was real concerned about that. And I know that the superintendent put a special staff person in to help us do better tracking of it. I wonder how do we compare to other school districts in Orange County and um do you have any suggestions as far as how we're going to uh? I know I know you have these interventions, uh and we've been talking about those before, but it just seems that the eighteen point six percent is awfully high. It was, it was lower than that when I came on the board.
Yeah, I think I think when we compare it to other surrounding districts, it's a challenge everywhere. Um, not only in our county, but beyond statewide. Um, and I've talked a lot with Superintendent Valoria about just the personalizing of the approach and the work that we do, getting a getting a person that's maybe not your first period teacher, not necessarily the, you know, the heavy administrator that's going to bring down the iron fist, but approaching families with care and concern and really making students and families understand that we can't help or support or educate you unless you're here is one of the really powerful messages that we're delivering in not in an email, not, you know, not in a phone call, but some mostly face-to-face with our most severe kind of attendance offenders, I guess.
Do you have any idea about the percentage of these students who are absent are absent because their parents were taking them on a trip to Vale or to Europe or something like that?
I mean, we definitely could disaggregate the information around that, but the work that we do to get the families where we want them to be and students in classes, that it's not, that isn't the focus. The focus is the importance of students being on campus and present. Um, but yes, we we have the backstory behind attendance issues that our families are facing. Oftentimes, those aren't really the ones that we're concerned about. We're more concerned about students that aren't feeling connected to to school.
It would just help me to know what the percentage of uh that are being taken out for family events. Yeah, that might help me understand more about chronic absenteeism.
Yes, as long as they do um short-term independent studies, it doesn't count against chronic absenteeism. So if it's four, five, in excess of five days, then we could do short-term independent studies and that won't go against the chronic absenteeism rate. To answer your question, statewide, I think chronic absenteeism was in excess of uh twenty-three, twenty-four percent as a state. And so uh as a district, we're at fourteen percent. So the high schools are uh obviously much higher, it seems like these days. So the number there is below the state and county average, I would argue. Um, but for us, obviously, we've we like to be on the, we want better data than everywhere else. So um yes, we we can start aggregating some of the data. Some of it is, you know, if someone says they're out sick for five days, we don't know if they're out sick or if they're traveling because they don't divulge that information. So if the data is as good as we we have it, but we have looked at that and we'll definitely share that weekly update. We can do that for most all sites.
To go, I'll just ask this real quick. To go along um with Dr. Kelly, I've I've been reading about the home visits to curb absenteeism. When you say face-to-face, is staff going to a home or calling people in?
All, all of the above.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
So building on both of those, uh, I am also interested in the I Ready scores that we showed here and the connection to tutoring. I'm just curious. I love the new tutoring thing that we're also doing at the middle school. I think it's great. So if um you are a student in the red or yellow, and I would even argue in the middle of the green, right? Because, you know, it's it's nice to be encouraging all students to be achieving excellence. Are they required? So if you get a bad grade on a test, does the teacher say you might want to do tutorial? Or is there targeted interventions around tutorials?
I'm glad you asked that. We have what we call priority days by subject. So teachers have the ability to assign a student that got a poor grade on a test or is missing a concept on an assignment to to uh do their tutorial on their priority day. So we have, as an example, we're speaking about math. We have math Mondays. Math Mondays are a priority day for
Mandatory.
Right, but there is also opportunity to go even deeper with a student with a personalized goal setting. So we have our they're going to get uh from their first round of comprehensive assessment, I ready, they're going to get a report that reflects really where their peaks and valleys were in that process and get uh specific uh specific tailored lessons to build their skills around the areas that they struggled at. And then also, what we're really challenging is, you know, we have, we have, we want students to be responsible and responsive to things, but we also need to teach them how, right? So and we want our teachers to be responsive to the need that students are. So this system really allows us to analyze the student performance on the comprehensive assessment and tailor supports and lessons around that to help them become at grade level or even beyond.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I in it, you know, for kids who are in the middle, it's equally good for them to be encouraged.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, the other, this is just an addition, an add-on comment about absenteeism. I mean, I have the problem at the college level, too. People stayed home during the pandemic and went, I can learn this at home just as easily as I can do it at school. And a lot of what my teacher's doing is online anyway, so what does it matter? So I think that there's not the same, you know, I have student requests all the time. Can I just do this course hybrid? Can you record the lecture? I'd like to do it from home. Um, the answer is no. Um, but, you know, I think it's also possible that as we move further away from the pandemic, there will be a reaculturation of school attendance.
Absolutely. And I have to say that I'm so proud of the work that on the wellness front, our peer mentors do, but also on our leadership front, our team members and clubs and leaders in clubs and and student leadership and student senate really focus on like the culture build on our campus because we want people to feel like they're missing out if they're not on campus.
Right, right.
And that's not
Improvement.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. It was a good report. Thank you.
Dr. Alman, yeah, really nice report. Um, a couple of takeaways just on what you've accomplished um new this year, you know, from past years of looking to this, this flex time chart was was remarkable. And the things that you seem able to accomplish just with some technology and a team and probably tons of work behind the scenes uh seems like it's it's really opening up a lot of opportunities for students and for your interventions to work. So a huge kudos on that. I wrote fantastic on my chart, and I just can't tell you guys enough how I really think that will change uh your results this year. I hope it does.
Me too.
And on the chronic absenteeism, I'd be interested to know what it was at your site pre-pandemic. Because when I saw it going from eighteen-six down to ten-nine, I also wrote fantastic. I thought that was was really remarkable as well. And going um back to what Dr. Mouse Chesty just said, the nature of attendance has shifted. We won't ever get back to learning and the the concept that everything that you learn is done at a desk in front of a teacher again in education, even with fourth and fifth graders, right? So, you know, if we're at the absenteeism rate that we had pre-pandemic, I would still consider that an improvement because the nature of learning has shifted. So, you know, maybe in some future report, we can know that, but I think that that's
We are actually, to your point, nine point eight percent in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, thirteen point six in fifteen, sixteen, eleven point six in sixteen, seventeen. So if you're at ten point nine, you're pretty much right in where we used to be prior to the pandemic.
Yeah, and I I think there's a lot to be said that students can. You know, Canvas, you know, five years ago, you couldn't just go and see everything that took place with the exception of maybe your ten or fifteen percent right there, actually while you have the flu on the couch, right? So there's a lot of what happens has has shifted. So I think our expectation for what chronic absenteeism will be has shifted, and that allows us to really focus on the students that are not connected to school because those are the ones that we we need a lot of heavy lifting with.
But I don't think the state has shifted as far as in the requirements that we report.
The state is addressing it correctly.
Yeah, yeah. The intent is the state's going to address it. The other piece is that actually chronic absenteeism is absenteeism is not an indicator for high schools. So it's like, go figure, right? So uh it doesn't show up on the dashboard for high schools. It's a district data point, but in an elementary and a middle school, but it's not a high school data point.
I guess you don't have to be in school to learn high school.
Well, interestingly enough, it's a major focus of our counseling team. And obviously, they, we, attendance has always been an issue for us, like a focus for us in MTSS because we do, we focus on academics, we focus on attendance, and we focus on wellness. And those are the three buckets that we really frame our MTSS workaround. But it's not necessarily whether it's on the dashboard for us. It's really, we want to, we can't serve on campus, right? So it's still always going to be a really important issue for us. And um, yeah, I'm just, we're lucky. We've automated a lot of things like correspondence things around attendance for low-lying attendance issues that really have allowed us to present and be face-to-face with families that need us the most.
Yeah. And then my final comment was just on the, I say, the the counseling for all seems to be a theme that's come out the last couple of years, whether you're meeting with every student, not just those having issues or having um needs, but, you know, developing grade-level counseling standards and
Absolutely.
Meetings and goals for every student. I mean, I think that's really important. There's those that are really behind and those that are go-getters. And then there's like the broad swath of students in the middle, so
Absolutely.
Great job finding.
I think it, I think it's one of the things that we're most excited and proud of is the the scope and sequence that we really, I mean, honestly, if you think about it, eventually, it's for us and our amazing district's going to be TK through twelve and beyond is really, we're going to be able to articulate what we're going to give all students from a counseling, academic support, socio-emotional wellness kind of menu from grade to grade. So I'm excited about that.
Just a couple of comments. Um, I just wanted to clue in to the attendance thing and then shut up for a while. Um, I agree with my colleagues. Excellent report. I um looked, I'm looking at two-thirds of your teachers doing the unit redesign, so they're really setting an example of taking risks that is really good for your students because that's what we want them to be able to do to take risks and not know what's going to happen. And the Counseling 101 with the dual enrollment, so everybody feels like, okay, maybe I can go to college. Maybe I can do this. Um, I like that you really looked at the students' needs assessment in your planning and really listened to the student voice. I wondered what, so on the report for social emotional competencies and positive self-identity, um, and that really went up about students feeling confident about their plan after high school. What is being done for the the ones who don't have a plan or don't feel good about their plans after high school?
Well, the the real work are in the one-on-one counseling conferences with uh our students. So right now, as an example, we're going through junior conferences. It's junior conference season. That means every counselor, and you can see somewhere here, where is I, where did I put the? I thought I, there it is. The ratio, we have one counselor for every two hundred and twenty students. Um, that's a really good ratio that allows us to do a lot of important one-on-one work, right? So we we just do deep dives around supports and services for students and families to get, we we recognize that so many pathways are out there for students, and there's not one conventional pathway to the next step in life after high school. So we just really provide them with resources and support. Um, and that might mean intensive uh one-on-one conferences with the counselor, but it also might mean referrals off to the College and Career Center to get connected to um, you know, other options that aren't directly for your college and universities, but a plan for the for students after, building their interest inventory around careers and skills and strengths. Um, all those things happen for all students, but when you get down to it and they ask your question But when you get down to it and they ask your question about what if it's, what if we're missing the mark with a student? Then the the personalization just kind of increases to support that student and try to, I don't want to say capture because that's not the right word, but try to kind of guide them and direct them into options that they have.
Good. I've seen that the career counseling can be really helpful for students if they figure out a career path that they might want to go on. And look into that. They can see that, oh, I need math for this. And all of a sudden, math becomes important for them and their math scores go up. So using a career to in improve academics because they see a reason for it.
Right. Is Well, a lot of it for us is building awareness around that first and foremost. So we use this platform called Thrively or Student because you guys approved the use of it. But like we build really arsenal of simple lists of things that students are good at, that they're strong at. And then connect the strengths with things that they might be good at or have an interest in building a career. But also opposite of what you said, too, it's also finding out, like students embark on these pathways and they find out that they don't want to be something that they thought they did.
Which is very valuable.
That's just as valuable. Yeah, so it's good both ways.
Yeah, thanks.
An excellent report. I'm appreciative that you recognize that you have a changing shift. In other words, you listen to the student voice, you gather all this data and you reference that that you come back next year and you may have different focuses. Because that really, to me, is significant, that it's it's a continually evolving process. And I'm appreciative that you share the data, like the DF data, that it isn't, you know, something that you're not presenting to us. So the the transparency of your data, I think, is is also significant. I just would say for, it just dawned on me, listening to some of this talk, that absenteeism has been a focus for years. I mean, that's something I've always been exposed to. That is why we actually have what's now Midwinter Break, but started a ski week to address a real decline in attendance during the month of February. So it's, we're, it's like some other issues. It's something that we have to continually address. It's not going to go away. But it is a focus and is, as you said, especially now with so many things that we address with students besides their academics, that they need to be there. And if we, and as you said, if we share that with the families and emphasize the importance of being there and then reach out to try to find out reasons. I I really heard you say the students that don't feel connected. That's why they're looking for a reason to avoid coming to school, that they're not comfortable there.
Right.
That's a really important group for us to reach out to. But I just think we're doing an awful lot. And when I look at what we do now with Bell Schedule and with the Flex Programming, we really are, if it's if it's inadvertent or purposeful, preparing students for what they'll encounter when they leave high school.
I agree.
Because that's, that's how life is, whether it's on a college campus or whether it's out working in a trade. It's an ever-changing process that they need to adjust all the time to. And some of the colleges have been before COVID doing hybrid classes and doing remote learning. Not that, I mean, my experience with it, I thought, wait a minute, we're paying tuition for this. The students aren't even going to class and the instructor was in another country, but it was, but it was an experience for them, you know? And then, of course, you know, as I agree completely with Kelly Osborne, I think that we've changed the landscape. And I don't even, I can't even imagine where we may be headed. But anyway, significant what you're doing at the high school. And I also think that when you reference that with the VOSK and continuing, that we are fortunate here to have continuity in leadership. Because that really helps that whole landscape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Information items for our business division and do we have public comment on item seven A, monthly finance update?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. As you can see, it's a monthly financial report ending the end of November. So not a lot of new information as of first interim, which is all the data through the end of October. I will just mention that both revenues and expenses are tracking exactly as predicted by the trend line. Revenues are coming in a little higher than expected and also expenditures are a little higher than expected. And you'll notice that the total ending fund balance is roughly the same as what we started with. So it's exactly, really no, no fiscal impact is shown or dictated in this report. The one thing I would like to point out, though, however, is on page six of eleven, when you get the various fund types, and I gave each board member a handout. You'll note that the board did take action to approve setting up a new Fund Twelve. And that's for our Child Development Fund, our preschool or transitional kindergarten extended day programs. That will eventually be in there. We are still waiting for the county to establish that fund for us and at which time it will start showing up in the monthly financial report. So I just want to give an early preview. We have it ready. Again, we're just waiting for the county to get us all set up. So thank you again. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Dixon? Then we have seven B. Do we have public comment on the twenty twenty-four twenty-five LVUSD Comprehensive District and School Safety Plan?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Okay, thank you. So this is our annual update to the district-wide comprehensive safety plan. And I'll start off first by thanking the work of our safety committee as a whole. As you know, we meet annually four times a year. We dive into this work with our subcommittee led by our our three chairs that include myself, Victoria Weber, who does a lot of work for us, and of course, Mr. Zeta. The committee got together this year and we have two real changes to the plan that I'll draw your attention to. And again, this is an information item now. So if questions come up on any of the changes or modifications we've made, please just email Dr. Valoria and we'll make sure we get back to you with any answers or feedback within the plan. The first one has to do with updates to category three within the plan, primarily sections three point five and three point six. And you'll notice that we call it out now as active violence versus reference to simply active shooter. There are a lot of procedural changes in that, but the reason I draw attention to that is because what we recognize as a safety committee is that acts of violence include all types of weapons and responses. And we don't want to just focus in on what a shooter could do. There's all types of other weapons that you just, as a staff member, we need to be able to respond appropriately. A big portion of the update had to do with standardizing the lockdown procedures so that we have common language amongst all of our four sites. So no matter where you are, if you happen to be visiting other sites, as you know, we have a lot of staff that rotates between the sites to support the various levels of students. The language will be the same, which is incredibly important in a lockdown. The last thing is a new section, and this was required by law through a legislative update. And it was an added section related to fentanyl safety. And I would just like to thank Dr. Keller and his team, who were instrumental, obviously, in that for us. And that is now part of our comprehensive safety plan. One other legislative piece that you might have heard about is with regards to the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. Please note that is not in this safety plan, but instead that will be added to our Injury Illness and Prevention Plan. So it is something that we will have done before the end of the year as required by the law. But it is not something that's going to be in our comprehensive safety plan, at least at this time, because we felt it would be more appropriate to put in in the Injury Illness and Prevention Plan, which goes out to all of our employees as well. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions and look forward to any feedback you have.
Questions tonight for Mr. Dixon?
So I understood that you would like us to email our questions to you. Is that what you, or Dr. Valoria, is that what you said?
Yeah, either way, and then I will coordinate with Dr. Valoria, make sure we get responses prior to bringing this back for action.
Okay, because I have a number, but
You can ask those tonight. He's, I think he's
I'm allowed to?
It's a very, yes, it's a very comprehensive plan. So if you have, if you go over it more or have questions that come up going forward, then you email those. But if you have questions now, you certainly may ask them.
Okay, I I have some questions now. Page thirty-five, which is about the bomb threat. So it, it says, try to keep the caller on the phone as long as possible. If the threat's received by phone, attempt to get more information. And then after that, there's a checklist that you're supposed to keep by your telephone with a lot of questions to ask. I guess I'm thinking if if I'm a teacher and somebody calls and says, you know, I put a bomb at the school, it's going to go off in ten minutes. I think I would want to alert other people, not stay on the phone and say, you know, what kind of bomb did you put here and when's it going to explode and why'd you do this? And I think, I think it's good to have everything listed. But I think we also have to depend on our our staff, which is excellent, on making decisions in the moment that may be better than what is written here.
I read that a little bit differently, just to interject that, that it's at that checklist at the bottom was be the building administrator. So not the, like not if the teacher received that call, that then would the information would be shared and then they would follow this up at the bottom. Maybe I, maybe I'm, Mr. Dixon, you have the better answer, I'm sure.
Okay, so you're, so you're saying if a teacher receives the call, they don't keep the bomb person on the phone?
No, I'm saying you follow that. You look down below. More involved, the building administrator isn't involved.
Right, so what, so at what point do you get the building administrator involved? Are you supposed to go through this bomb checklist first?
Has a better answer, I'm sure.
So as a reminder, this is a general guideline and district-wide. Each site has their own site-specific safety plans as well as their own drills. And then there are, of course, fluid situations and and we don't address every possible hypothetical in this plan. It is simply a mindset and a process that you go through to help you develop those individualized responses. So in the case where, yeah, you're a teacher, it would be usually, with the training we receive from our law enforcement, it's more than likely the bomb threats go into the front office. So that's why the procedure is more tailored for their response versus an individual classroom or some other side office person, which would have and could very likely have a very different response depending on exactly what's said. So yeah, just want to make sure that this isn't, you follow each one of these, every employee in the district. But this is a comprehensive, we just have, give ourselves a guideline and then everything gets tailored over time. Because as we know, safety is fluid and safety always has to be improved. It's just the environment we live in.
Yes, and I appreciate how thorough this is. I just wanted some confidence given to our staff to make a good decision in the moment if they needed to. And I wondered, like on page forty, on the hostage situation, are you, are are teachers supposed to be teaching students how to respond to hostages? On their own, if they're threatened?
There's not a specific teacher training for students on response to hostages. Again, it would go back to whatever fluid situation it is. And this, again, this is providing kind of a framework of thought on how the school site in totality would deal with that situation. But then, yeah, everything needs to be tailored for specific scenarios. And I guess to the point of making decisions, the one big thing of advice that we've received over time is that we understand, yes, safety situations are very fluid. And one of the worst things you can do is freeze and not make any decision. That's worse than some decision. So that's the big training. And we pushed that last year.
So so it seems like it, this says students should be taught to respond on their own when threatened. That teachers should make students aware of that.
Oh, that's, yeah, that is, I'm sorry, you're talking about environmental awareness and situational awareness and that.
No, I, I, no, this is the hostage situation. So as a teacher, I would say, you know, boys and girls, if somebody grabs me and takes me away, you know, please don't follow, don't scream, don't run, you know, stay in the room, don't try to fight them. And if somebody comes for you, scream, kick, do whatever you have to.
Sure.
I mean, you would, I think you'd have those kinds of conversations. I certainly would.
Yeah.
If, or in another situation, if it's an earthquake and the window shatters and I'm down bleeding, you know, boys and girls, Jeff, please be responsible, leave the students out of the room. Yeah.
Sure.
So all those kinds of things. I'm asking, are they, are they being worked on at the classroom?
Yeah, you can't train for every possible situation, but
But you, but it's the same thing. Make your students feel confident and responsible that there are things they can do.
Absolutely.
You expect them.
Yes. And in addition to our our teachers, and they're still here as well, our school resource officers do a great job with getting the training out to all of our students and staff as well. And that's where you can really dive into those hypotheticals and say, okay, if this were to happen. And that's what the purpose of our tabletops were.
Right.
Is to start going through that exercise of, okay, guys, it's ten oh one, earthquake just hit. Buses aren't, there's three buses available. There's no longer six. How do we respond? And you walk through that scenario. And that's kind of the intent of the tabletops because it is, you can't put every scenario in this plan, but it's important to practice and learn.
Right. Okay. Good. I I was just looking at at this more as people looking at it and panicking if they have to go through that bomb list on the phone.
Yeah.
I I was taking it too literally.
Yeah, you won't be referring to this plan in the event of an emergency, so there wouldn't be a chance of you reading through and going through the steps. But that's why training is so important. The bomb threat, yeah, the procedures.
Most, most of it comes into the office.
No.
More likely for the teacher, it's the student who stands up and says they have a bomb in their backpack. Which
More, more often than not, what happens, and there are a lot of what-if scenarios, but traditionally we'll get something via email. It will be nonspecific. Or we will receive something at the front desk because that's the phone number they would call. So the front desk folks, those that are responsible for taking the regular phone, they're the ones that are going to take that call and they are the ones are expected to have this under there so that they can then take the notes while then alerting who's sitting probably very close by that we have a situation. And then that way they can, you know, take all the information down so we know what we're looking for, if we can get that information from the person. But what we have found in most cases in my time in in education is that they are nonspecific with the intent of causing just a disruption on campuses, so.
Jeff, this is just a quick question, but has the thinking about fencing changed? I have just a visceral reaction to the feeling that the kids are stuck on campus and unable to get off because, get out because our campuses are surrounded by fencing. I know some parents feel more secure with that. I feel less secure the more fencing we have. There's a lot of disagreement about it. So where the safety committee is on that right now?
Yeah, so most of the recommendations we do with fencing is with, from our Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center. And to the point of being closed in, that's why you'll notice on a lot of the perimeter fences, there's the panic hardware gates that swing out. So even if they're locked, you can't come in the campus, but you don't need a key to push to get out. If we're closing off the campuses completely, I would just say with fencing, perimeter fencing, that's fluid. It depends on what's going on with the the environment we're in. Today, unfortunately, it's, the real focus is defining that single point of entry to each campus. Because it's the only way you can really control the visitors or the people who are not necessarily supposed to be on campus or just stumbled in for some reason to be dealt with by the front office staff. And that's where the fencing is led today. Beyond that, the one thing I will say is we know, I had mentioned, safety constantly changes and evolves given the situations. And so it's not something, I wouldn't say anything is stagnant. I think every, everything with regards to safety and improvements is fluid, including fencing.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. Dixon, I had two areas of conversation. One is on the new fentanyl section on five point seven. So thank you for adding that because this is really a crisis facing our our young adults in Orange County. It talks about N five seven. And maybe this is also for Mr. Conlin. And any staff who is required to have current CPR first aid as part of their job duties will have fentanyl training. Is that how that section reads? And then could you clarify what staff are subject to CPR and first aid? Because I thought most teachers have to take CPR and first aid on some basis. Which is great. I mean, I think fentanyl training is fantastic. There's no, you know, there's, we're going to save lives if we all get fentanyl, you know, overdose training. I'm just curious.
In relation to your question around the requirement for for teachers to be CPR certified. Again, it's a requirement to initially be, but there's no, there's no longer requirement to keep it active.
Okay, so just upon hiring?
Yes. When you look at other staff, we have a large number of our classified staff. It's a part of their job description. So we we incorporate that into annual trainings with them. And then our district nurses are the ones that train on the administration of Narcan in relation to fentanyl. So we weave that into the specific training in relation to whatever the the person's job description requirements are. But we capture it that way, using our our staff to provide that training.
Okay. And then I just, this is just a comment, thinking more about this new area of our safety plan, which is five, seven and fentanyl and the rates of what we're seeing in the county. Dr. Allman, Jason mentioned seniors and kind of self-care. And I could think of no better way to send our seniors off than having some of this information before they leave for college or trade because that's where we really see the numbers spike up. It's just something to think about as we As we try and keep our kids safe as they go out into college, it's available. Got a prescription at pharmacies, but we're thinking about it as as keeping our kids safe when they're on campus and how do we equip them to be safe? Going out into that world. So that was my my first point on fentanyl. So thank you so much for adding that. And then the second point was on, well, did you have a comment, Joan? I'll just make one point. Are you sure? Okay. I'm gonna make one point because I'm looking at the clock and it's almost seven thirty, so.
To add to the fentanyl part, I think it would be very valuable to also teach the students to get the Narcan.
Jeff, I had a question on that same five point seven. It was curious where it says the AED is used only by trained personnel. My understanding is that. Someone doesn't need to be trained to use those because they are self-acclinatory.
Yeah, they they kind of automate themselves, especially the new AEDs we have, they actually automatically adjust the shock charge as well now. So they're becoming very technologically advanced. But you do still have to have staff trained. And in fact, when we got the new AEDs, the nurses went around and trained some of our staff. But yes, indeed, you could operate it without training. It can walk you through the.
So there wouldn't be a problem, especially now that we have them that are more available to the public if they're on the sports fields.
Right.
It wouldn't be a problem if somebody used it. Okay.
No, that's and that was the intent of that because there's almost more of a risk of suffering that cardiac arrest than being injured from those at this point.
Yeah, this is just more specific to our staff. So it's our safety plan related to our staff. So we we do have an expectation that we train our staff on how to use it. For a variety of reasons, one of which I would say from a from a union perspective, like. They they want to make sure they have the knowledge to do it the right way, right? So that there is.
Okay, I get that. And. I guess that would also mean that. They, well, if we train them, then that isn't, you know, it is part of their training, isn't a problem for them. They feel confident in in using that. I was looking at it as a beyond our people, so because we have it on our campuses. So then then on the three point six lockdown, I was just, it just made me think when I read this about. Students may need to become resources for subs. That perhaps we could have something that would be available to a sub. That on the lockdown procedures when they go in so that, I mean, some students could be able to do that, but in a in a crisis situation, they might not, they might freeze, as you said.
Absolutely, they well, they do get the subs get sub folders with the the procedures in there. But I think what's even more exciting for us, I know Victoria's been working on this for quite some time is. I I call them at a glance guides for various scenarios of lockdown or earthquake. And it's a quick little flip chart that anyone, even a sub, will have access to in every classroom. And you can go to whatever event is occurring and it's just a quick look of, oh, here's the steps I need to follow. And in reference to the students in the safety plan is because the students are obviously being trained with our staff and going through the drills and would be more aware. So we want to encourage them to be, you know, when they can be a resource for them in support.
Thank you.
I did have two quick other comments, President Vickers, one on the stuff that's been done over the last couple of years. Thank you guys for working on those door hardware, doors, the keys, the panic bars you brought up from Dr. Monchowski's, like all that takes a lot of upkeep. And when they're functioning, they work really well for keeping our campuses safe. When they don't actually self-close or the keys are all over the place, I'm sure it's much harder. And there was a comment on this school safety software to screen visitors. But it also says it tracks them, and I was curious if you could elaborate, like, are we surveilling our visitors on on campus with the little chips or something?
Yeah, I think by tracking, it means we know when they're on campus and then they check out when they leave.
Okay, so not any new software that we.
It's a big circle around the campus.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Hey, thank you. And any further questions that you come up with or you that you think of? Then as Mr. Dixon said, email them to him so that we're prepared when we bring it back for our approval. Thank you. We have information items in human resources. Do we have public comment on? Eight A second quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement?
No.
Mr. Conlon.
Yes, thank you. At this time, there were no complaints received.
Thank you. Move to action items, nine, human resources. Do we have any public comment on approval of resolution twenty four oh one authorizing the district to enter into an agreement with Public Agency Retirement Services, PARs? To design and administer a supplementary retirement plan, SRP, for eligible, certificated non-management. Certificated management, classified non-management and classified management employees, provided there is sufficient employee participation.
No public comment.
Thank you. And Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Vickers. So yes, with your approval of resolution twenty four dash zero one this evening. Looking to meet USD will work with the Public Agency Retirement Services Company to offer a supplementary retirement plan to eligible employees. The supplementary retirement plan, SRP, would provide participating, certificated non-management, certificated management, classified non-management. And classified management employees with a tax qualified annuity that costs seventy percent of their final year salary. The program requires all employees to resign from the school district at the end of the school year, no later than June thirtieth. And the goal of the program is to generate a savings, of course, or at the minimum, no cost to the district. By increasing the number of retirements in the twenty three twenty four school year. So if the district withdraws a retirement incentive due to it not being fiscally savings or or cost neutral. Then resignations can be rescinded. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions on this? Okay, then I'd ask for a motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the roll call, correct?
Chase.
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Kelly, I'm sorry, Member Perry. Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Monchowski?
Yes.
President Vickers.
Yes, thank you. Do we have any public comment on nine B approval of resolution twenty four dash oh two retirement incentive program, California State Teachers Retirement System?
None received.
Thank you. Mr. Conlon?
Yes, thank you, President Vickers. So again, we're asking the board to approve this resolution twenty four dash zero two. Which would allow the district to offer an alternative retirement incentive plan of two additional years of service credit to eligible Calsters. Defined eligible members of the of the STERS defined benefit program. The governing board of a school district that grants the two years of service must take formal action. By adopting a resolution to offer the benefit to all its employees who are in the DB program and eligible to retire. The employees must retire during the window, which is going to be from June fifteenth, twenty twenty four to August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. It has to be that the the next day after their twenty three twenty four work year would end. And then the window period. It begin, it so it'll be listed on the on the resolution. Again, eligible staff will have to choose one incentive plan that works best for their unique situation. They it's either they they take the two-year service credit if they're in Calsters or or the annuity. It's one or the other. And again, the impact of the budget will be determined by the number of employees electing to participate. And the replacement salary costs. And again, each plan is handled differently in relation to is it if it's a cost savings for the the Calsters plan. We have to show that with to Calsters directly versus versus PARs. So again, preliminary calculations show that we we anticipate we would realize cost savings. Any questions?
Mr. Conlon, are our teachers aware of how they can get more information about this? Maybe the calculations or have detailed questions and are those hours available for them to get those questions answered after work? You know, it seems like everything wants to close at four these days.
Yes, so what, once this gets advertised, we're having, we've we've connected with a representative from Calsters. Who's going to be coming and doing some preliminary. Actually workshops here on campus. But in addition to that, there is a phone number they called to schedule a one-on-one, either a Zoom or a meeting with Calsters directly. Because each person's it has unique circumstances and about how how it would apply. So it through all of the messaging that will go out this week, we encouraging them, here's, we need you to contact as soon as possible. Contact Calsters and schedule a time to meet with a benefit advisor so you can know your exact situation, what's what's best for you. So that all that is going to be provided for them, some in person, but encouraging them to please take the phone number. And and the counselor says they they're they're they'll be available to to schedule those those meetings.
I had one follow-up question when we offered this two years ago. Do we get any information, not necessarily names, but how many people go through the analysis process? Like, how many people would have done the one-on-one or, you know, do a lot of people go through?
People inquire about it once it's offered. Is that what you're asking?
I know. So when we went through this process two years ago, does our administrator, the plan administrator or Calsters in this resolution, do they provide us any data on? How many consultations they did?
They did not provide us that. No, again, this is unique where we're offering to. The last time it was just the PARs annuity. So then it was a time where they actually scheduled, you had kind of you you met with the the PARs representative. So again, it's it's be a different in this situation. It's like it's either if you're in Calsters, you meet and you want the two-year service credit, you're going to call Calsters directly. Versus meeting with the PARs representative. The PARs will also be on campus doing presentations as well, that we're going to have those up. Several opportunities, you know, in person scheduled for them after their their work hours. But again, there's also opportunity to meet online as well. So plenty of opportunity will be provided for them.
Any other questions? Then I'd ask for a motion, please. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chase.
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Monchowski?
Yeah.
President Vickers.
Yes, thank you. We have a consent calendar. Do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
None received.
Thank you. We will need to remove. The the January eleventh board minutes because that has to be a separate action item because we have two abstentions. But other than that, are there items in the consent calendar that board members would like to pull? None?
Comment but not pull.
Pardon me?
Comment but not pull.
Okay. Then, other than D, I'd ask for a motion to approve consent calendar items C through O. Sarah, there's a brief comment that you needed to make.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Is that all right?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't pull it because I.
Because we can't have discussion unless it's pulled, so if if your question's going. Go ahead.
Okay, it was a little difficult for me because the some of them, there are a lot of number ones. Anyway, I'm I'm asking some questions, not, I just want you to make sure that I I. Trust the staff. I think you do a wonderful job. I'm not questioning your work. It's just our job to do oversight and ask questions for clarification. And so on item E, I am wondering some of the, some of the. Let's see here, some of the stipends were listed by amount. Some are listed by, you know, saying it's somewhere on the pay scale. And I, it seems like for transparency, it would be much easier if all of the amounts were listed. And why are some listed exactly and some not?
So the the stipends that are listed from the academic chart, it's it's listed based, yes, it we have it at range one. Whatever whatever the percentage is based on range one, step one. It's been our our practice to put it that way because we were, the sites were doing the calculations on their own. And there the it was it was, there was a level of inaccuracy. So we said, okay, let's just list it how it is on the on the academic stipend chart, which is it's either one percent of range one, step one. Or, you know, four percent of range one, step one. I mean, we're happy to, if there's board.
I think it would be easier to just have the amount so it's consistent that we see amounts, not, you know. Step C on a salary chart.
Well, it's always, it's always going to be a percent of range one, step one. That's how the academic stipend chart is created in the LFO contract.
Well, some of it says site lead hourly, but it doesn't give a current hourly rate.
What, well, which one are you looking at? Because I'm looking at, you know, Madison Cragman on page on page three. Sixty-six hours and it has, there's a dollar amount next to it underneath where it says general fund. So which which one are you saying there is there not a dollar amount for?
Well, I'm saying. So for instance, science teacher, general fund, not to exceed three point five percent range, step one. Well, so we're supposed to figure out what, and then the one three point two five of step one is. And then another one is an eight percent range of step one. So it's, and then another one is current hourly rate, which is who knows what. And then the one underneath that, their current hourly rate is fifty dollars and nineteen cents an hour.
Well, so when you see the fifty dollars and nineteen cents, that's the negotiated non-instructional rate for for certificated staff members. When you see the fifty seven thirty five, that's the that's the negotiated instructional rate for for certificated staff members. Classified members get their current hourly rate. Whatever they whatever they make during the day is is what they get for additional hours. And again, from an accuracy standpoint, we went with listing it as current hourly rate. So when, so there isn't an error on the on the report in relation to what gets needs to get processed. Because if if there was a situation where there was an error made on the report, then payroll would have an issue having to pay the right amount. So we do it as a way to kind of keep it, it's a cleaner process to ensure that there's no typos that are here that would impact the. But I'm happy to to provide.
Okay, so you're you're saying that it you don't really want to put down those hourly rates because everybody's is kind of different?
Classified employee, everyone has a different hourly rate.
So you'd rather not put that down?
Well, I did it from a, just from a, I made the decision based on just from an accuracy standpoint. I thought it was cleaner to it because this.
Maybe cleaner, but it's not as transparent.
Again, I'm happy to look at other options if there's direction from the board.
And then. I'm I'm just looking at people looking at this. It it looks confusing. Then on the warrants on item I. So I'm looking at. Find my notes. So is for one, I'm assuming it's one student, but I'm I'm not sure. That is in a special school, but the there are rates for the tuition. But then the rate for room and board is twenty thousand a month. That seems like a lot. I'm I'm paying room and board for a student that I mentor at Chapman. And it's not twenty thousand a month, and I think it's high.
These are contracted rates that are approved in the contract, so these are not outside of what the board's already approved. You guys approve these contract rates for room and board, master contracts come to the board for approval. That that is often the going rate, you know.
That is the going rate.
We have some students that the cost is for the entire year is upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sometimes upwards of four hundred thousand dollars for all of room and board and their education. So yeah, it can be extremely costly, especially a non-public agency. So it's not like a, you know, just students paying rent. It's, you know, it's a facility that is specializing in the care that that student needs. And that's part of the the agreement, the master contract and all those master contracts go through the SLP process, but are also. There's a state process as well for master contracts.
I I guess I was just surprised because there's tuition and then there's extra charges and then there's a room and board. But I guess that's just the way it's done. And then I was looking at like for the Boys and Girls Club, which I adore all everything they do. For our schools, but it looks like three months. To pay them for three months, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So I guess that's about three sixty a year. What does a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a month for three months include?
It could be a variety of services. I mean, our biggest program with them is our ELO, ELOP program, which is a few hundred thousand dollars. For all the after-school care, the summer programs for all of our low-income, unduplicated students. And then you also have, we have other programs, whether that's.
This isn't during the summer. This is, this is.
ELE, our ELOP program is year-round. That's how the state funding is set up, so we get several hundred thousand dollars to support that program. And then we have other contracts that so we do them around where they come on campus every day, during lunches, all that.
Which I think is great.
We would use some, yeah.
I I guess I just wanted more of a breakdown on that, so I knew how much was going to them coming on campus, how much was for after-school.
Yeah, those are, those are the agreements. We do like a MOU with them each year around like the different agreements, whether it's ELOP, the social play. We'll bring those to the board, but I mean, I could.
Right, no, I I know we've agreed on those. I'm just looking. I'm just looking at of the $113,000, I'm kind of looking for percentages of what's going to each.
Well, it just depends on when the the invoice happens. So if we have $250,000 for a program, they might invoice us in December, they might invoice us in March. Just depends on how we've set it up so that they're getting their payment so that they can pay their staff to support that program. So the breaking it down during the time of year just depends on when they invoice us.
Okay, so maybe what would be helpful is a total year with each program, the total amount. And then I could see what percentage each program is.
I can give you, I mean, it's in those contracts that we approve for them.
Right.
We do share, so I can reshare those and put those on a table for you to see that, yeah.
When I took my field trip to the Boys and Girls Club, I met a number of staff who were being paid by us. And they were covering lots of services for the for the district. So I think that's where a lot of that money is.
Yeah, I was going to interject that I would ask Member Perry, don't to be reticent to pull items because we can't get into discussion. Consent calendar is just brief questions only. And so I think in light of what we're, the direction it went tonight, would have been preferable if you had pulled those. It's not a problem to pull them. And then somebody else can also join in when you make your comments or ask your questions. Other than that, we're prohibited from doing that. So don't.
I thought before you told me not to pull them.
No, no, it's fine to pull things off when your questions are more involved and more in depth and going to, you know, perhaps bring up a desire to have a discussion like Dr. Kelly would like to have. But we can't do that unless it's pulled.
Okay. So. And I I.
It's okay.
I love the things that they're doing. I just wanted a better feel for that. And then for item N, the SARC report, my question is, I I see it similar to last year. Are we doing anything with the information? Or is, I mean, why is it, why is it just on the consent calendar?
There's a requirement to produce this each year. This was, I think, probably an ed code that passed 20 years ago-ish, I want to say. And so since then, we now have a California dashboard. We do a mid year update, we do an annual update. So for the most part, this process is a dated process that we share all this information, you know, in other ways. Because this, this is actually a report on last year. So it's not even on this year. And we have to post them on our website by January 31st each year. So we just put it through here for your, to be approved by the board annually.
It's put on the website, but is it used? Like, you know.
I have never, I have never, I have, we use the data is pretty much the same that we do in the Alcap. So we, the same way we would use the Alcap data, since it's the same data, we would use it that way. But I have never received any questions on the SARC's on our website since I've been here.
Then we need to have a vote on consent calendar, student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. We need to address item D, approval of the January 11th, 2024 board minute, board meeting minutes. Is there a motion, please? Second, we can't second, you were here. It's right. You and Kelly have to abstain. Second, okay. So we are ready to vote. Student vote?
In favor.
Board members in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. Thank you. We move to governance, which is a, do we have any comments on the governance section? Public comment?
None received.
Clarify that, we know we have comments. We're preparing for our governance workshop on February 1st. So this 11A item is an information item, but it's asking board members to state at this time, as best you can, what areas, we had a very comprehensive review last year of our protocols. You were at the meeting, but not yet on the board. And so the hope is that we can have an efficient meeting with not going through them one by one, but by board member request on a protocol that you feel that we need to revisit. And then other items. Remember Perry, you referenced something when you made the report on the conference attendance, that there was something that you wanted to bring up at the governance meeting. So that's the purpose of this item is to state now so that we can be organized and have a good meeting.
I would like to talk in that meeting about the governance issues that came up in the discussion of the school calendar. I don't want to talk about the school calendar, but I think it raised a lot of important governance issues about what our expectations are of board members in terms of how they would vote on that and how the discussion played out in terms of revisiting the vote.
I had brought up, I wanted us to discuss if there were ways we could improve our board meetings, both for the public and for us, and look at things that are being done in other places that we may want to adopt. Maybe we don't, but I wanted to look at that. And I wanted to look at at our agendas. And I know there are a lot of things that have to be on the agenda, but also the order. And also, if, I'm still confused on members of the public, if they want to put something on the agenda, how that works.
One of our bylaws.
Right, that they, yeah, but I I haven't.
But you, but you still feel not clear on that?
You're right.
It's number three on our protocol, so we could, on the protocol sheet, number three.
You have specifics on the improvement of meetings? Are you, is that part of the protocols? Is that?
No, not part of the protocols necessarily, no. Just the structure of the meeting, how things are handled. I think I would like to discuss how that might be improved.
Do you have specifics that you could, you don't have to say them right now, then, okay?
I I do have specifics, but I think that should be part of our discussion.
Okay.
Member Perry, just to provide more context on what will be on our agenda. Are you talking about, for example, like in CSBA, one of the workshops was on, you know, having productive meetings and making the public feel welcome? Is that the?
Yeah, I I think we could do a lot more towards making the public feel welcome.
So would you be willing to bring some of the ideas and suggestions that you heard there? And then maybe President Vickers and Superintendent Valoria, maybe communications might have some suggestions or could review and provide a little bit of input because it's really communications area.
And Kelly, you're asking that ahead of time so that we know what it will be at the, so we can be effective at the meeting or?
Yeah, I think if Member Perry has some ideas and she brings them ready to discuss, and if communications has any input for us. I think there's been a lot of movement and ways that even the communications team has made the, you know, the banner outside is one of them, right? You know, simple things that maybe they might have for us to discuss that we might like to do or might not like to do. That could be, that could maybe fulfill Member Perry's request.
And I would like to hear from the other board members too on any ideas they have of how our board meetings might be improved.
Anyone else?
My only request was to have a updated board governance calendar so that we can review that as a team to know when certain updates will be coming towards us. We have labor things we deal with, we have superintendent evaluation. We talked about a digital media plan that's really important. So having an updated calendar so we can kind of look month by month and see when big things are coming at us is really helpful for me personally.
And you would like to have that at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so that we're all on the same page. That way, if somebody's really interested in arts, they can say, oh, this is when I'm going to get update. Oh, I'm really interested in the media plan, this is going to be coming in six months.
So we see the one at the, at this meeting coming up on the first, we see the one that we have now. And then the board can discuss it as far as.
Yeah, yeah, take a minute to review. And I had a second request that we try and keep the meeting to 90 minutes. I don't know if anybody else concurs. I know, oh, Jim's looking at me, he concurs.
We have scheduled four to six, so, you know, I I. We can zoom the game, right?
I'd say that in order to do that, as much information that members can, you know, Member Perry, if you have specifics, please share them with President Vickers so that we can have, if necessary, handouts or anything, information to share with all the members in advance. We'd make it probably faster versus hearing things for the first time. So if there's different ideas, you know, and you haven't shared them with other members to this point, you can share them with Member Vickers or just share them directly with myself and Victoria. That way we can somewhat be prepared and try to structure. Because I don't want to ping, you know, it won't be effective if we're ping ponging back and forth between topics. So if we can get it kind of really laid out clearly, you know, we can go as quickly as possible. We do have to do a short brown act. I I think it's something that we regularly need to do. It's actually something that's expected, whether it's something we do as a presentation or is it written? But this is the one time we have everybody, so we'll, we can touch on that. A little piece on ethics, because there is ethics requirements that are coming forward. So we'll make sure that we have, so I've asked Mark to keep that as truncated as possible. But to your point, if we can get through, you know, and hold to that time period as much as possible, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Agreed?
President Vickers, this is our mandatory ethics training that we are required to have at some point.
You're going to have, that's an online module. But this is more just of a FYI as that's coming down the pipeline. So we're not doing the actual training because that will be happening in enforcement later. This is just an FYI, yeah. So you're not going to get the full training, it's just going to be heads up, here's what the expectations are.
It's coming and you'll need to do it, right? Okay. Do you have?
I just have a question, but.
Sure.
Member Perry's requests don't fall under protocols necessarily, so we'll have to.
Have other.
Have something else on the agenda, yeah.
An other category?
Yeah, but we can work that out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, board members. And we move now to reports. 12A, board member reports.
No report.
Okay, I had a wonderful time visiting with the, our animatage table with Brian Carver's in his classroom with his students. I have taken several classes on that and was really happy to see him using it in person and the students doing a review. And then it's always such a joy to see Scott Whitkop's multimedia class. And President Vickers was able to come for that and and Kelly Shear and Dr. Cannonberg. So I, I feel like when I talk to representatives and people in in Congress that if I have an experience myself, like with some of the equipment, I'm better able to talk about it. And I have some appointments coming up. Then I wanted to see how it was being used in Capostrano District. So I also saw the animatage table there and they have two new bodies. So they have a total of six. And one they found was really useful for their EMT class, which we might want to look into. It's a, it's another woman with a simulated pregnancy. So the EMT class can see exactly what happens to all the organs when the baby is pushed out and what happens with the feet, umbilical cord, et cetera. And so they thought it was, their EMT class thought that was very helpful. I was also able to help surprise Juan Alvarez, the pharmacy tech teacher, getting teacher of the year. And I had a long meeting with Dr. Weir about the budget. And like our budget that has gone up a lot for healthcare benefits and salaries. CCAs is too, but they don't have quite, the state funding has not gone up anywhere near as much. So there are probably going to have to be some cutbacks with CCA. And we're trying to figure out how to best do that. I attended a more PTA with Mr. Dixon and it's, they're always busy doing so many great things for kids. It's great. And like Chase, attended the Coco Cabana fundraiser for the drama department. And one of the the special speakers there was Mark Waters and his wife, Deena. And he directed the original Mean Girls, which is kind of a cult now. And our high school is doing Mean Girls for their musical. So it was really cool to have him there. And he gave some great advice to students. And I don't remember who asked him, but you know, how he had had been so successful in his career for so long. And he said, what we're teaching kids, I wasn't the best, I wasn't the smartest. I didn't have any family connections, but I just stuck with it. I just didn't give up, I just kept doing it. That was one. And his second was, I'm just a nice guy. And there's a lot of people in this business really that aren't. So during COVID, he kept busy the whole time. Many actors want to work with him because he is just a really nice person. So another good lesson for all of us. And what was great at this benefit was our own Angela Irish was celebrated. And it was a big surprise for her. You know, she's worked for the district for over 30 years and done so much mentoring drama students, but also keeping all the costumes and sewing the costumes. And and as a special surprise, her son and his wife were flown in to surprise her. And she was very surprised and very overwhelmed. That was lots of fun. Thanks.
That's okay. Okay, I just have a couple, just a couple of comments. I was really interested to watch some of the rugby at the high school on Friday night in between the basketball game. And it's a, it was new sport to me as far as learning the terminology. But it's, we have a little team out there and they had, they had a band playing and a really good announcer who was explaining a lot of things about the game. So that was something different and an expansion for our students, another activity for students to be involved in. And sort of along the line of what our student reps were reporting, there were a lot of kids at the basketball game to cheer on their their fellow students. And it was a really very contested game to the last seconds. The, I read, I read that article, I'm sure a lot of you saw that, about the 16 to 28 year olds, 26 year olds, whatever, that they're going back to the malls. It's a resurgence for malls because of dealing with loneliness and socializes, social isolation. And so I hear Dr. Allman in his report touching on so many things in that same category, but that the students are realizing that they want in person contact with other young people, that just all the social media is not fulfilling what they need. And I guess self recognizing that. And so it's been a boon to some of the malls that had kind of, were shriveling up. But they don't want to necessarily just shop. They want to have places to eat and they want to have movie theaters and they want to have, some of the malls are putting in gyms. It's just very interesting to see that kind of that cyclical thing that where students were so keen on connecting on devices and then realizing that they need actual in person contact. So that was, anyway.
That is really interesting that they're coming around. And I would like, I would say, anybody could not be sad and depressed if they were dancing with Chase.
So thank you all. I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, sorry. Well, I always seem to overlook something, but that's. Motion to adjourn. Student vote, thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye, opposed, carries five oh. Sorry, Jason.